Um, everybody knows this is a special meeting. It's in between our regular meetings and um, um, dealing with the noted budget items on here. Are there any comments? We'll start with the board on topics not on the agenda. Yes, Mike Todd.
Um, at the last select board meeting, I made some comments um, about land use and specifically Chris Whitten. And I've apologized to Chris Whitten for those. I've apologized to Brandon and Paul Tillman for those. I overstepped my bounds. Some of those comments could have been taken to uh, and made people think that Chris isn't doing his job, or that he's not getting along with the town manager. And neither one of those things is true. In fact, he's doing a very good job and he gets along very well with Brandon. He's doing a great job for us at the planning commission. And I also want to extend that apology to this board, because that kind of behavior also reflects on everyone here. So I apologize to all of you too.
Thank you, so noted. Are there any other comments from board members first on topics not on the agenda? I am a couple of minutes late here because I happened to catch some of the meeting of the school board. The school board started at six o'clock and they are, there was a motion on the table when I left I, to follow what lead that we take as far as moving or not moving town meeting. So the school is going to, I didn't listen to the vote, but that was the motion on the table and, so I don't, we don't have that here to talk about, do we?
So.
Okay, town meeting discussion. Okay, I can, I can, I can save that for later.
Okay, David Baker just texted me, so.
Okay, good.
If you want to know this, that information.
It's kind of, I'm jumping the gun here a little bit. I didn't, I didn't follow down. I don't think I have any others. I got a message maybe that the new grader, I don't know if it actually got delivered today, but it was supposed to. Okay, good.
Yeah, it did.
I wanted to go down and I texted Brandon to go down and then I just couldn't break away. I couldn't get out of what I was doing today. But we, I'd like, I'd like that to happen. And so John, if you, I don't know how, what your schedule is like maybe for the um, legislature, but it might be kind of fun to get a picture of, you know, for the record, for maybe Brandon and Ray and you. And it's kind of fun. I mean, it's brand new, it doesn't have any dust on it. I'm probably going to take that out.
I have to wear my suit?
Yep. Let's move to Brandon. Do you have any comments that are not on the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Is there any, anybody online or anybody here that has comments that are not on the agenda? And I'm hoping that our technology is working so they, they, whoever's online can speak. Okay?
I do actually have one request.
Is it from the public or is it from you?
Actually, never mind, I can wait. I can wait.
It's got to be not, a topic's not on the agenda. Okay, I don't, I don't hear anything, so. Let's move to the minutes of January 4th. Need a motion to accept those, please.
So moved.
Second. Motion been made in second to approve the minutes of January 4th. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, now we can go to the, the town meeting. The only thing I know is from, to recap what happened a week ago was that the legislature and the governor had given us a lot of ability to do what we wanted to do. That affected 2020. I wasn't thinking that all of a sudden we're in a new year. That did not extend to the new year and there is, my latest information said that there was talk that, that maybe like later this week. And that was the same case with Dr. Baker when he said, maybe he reached out to you, John? Or he said, he said he made contact with somebody in the legislature where that the, he thought that the, that was in the, in the work somewhere, whether they were going to allow that also to happen in 2021.
The, the bill is presented, passed the House today. I, it's on the, I anticipate the Senate will probably pass it tomorrow. The governor will probably sign it tomorrow afternoon. FYI, I attended Cavendish last night and they went ahead with their decision. They're going to stick with the original date, but only have a virtual meeting. Which apparently you can have a virtual meeting, but you can't have a virtual vote. So they're going to do, they're not going to mail out ballots. If, like Flam requested, if you can ask for absentee ballot or you can, they're going to open their polling place on the regular schedule.
So they're going to try to do it online to have the moderator or the presentation all done online?
Information only, correct.
Okay, so there'll be no floor votes, so it'll all be uh.
Right.
Yep, okay.
And they vote their budget on the floor. So this is a big change for them.
Oh wow. So, so how is that going to work then? Oh, they're going to go to Australia?
We, we could do the same thing. We could do everything by Australian ballot if we want to and just do an informational meeting.
Yep. Yep.
There's a lot of, lot of towns that are, that are, that are in that same predicament.
Right.
Doing the same. But I was worried about the school wanting to go with March 2nd if we weren't going to because.
That would be a problem, but I think that's under control.
That's, they're, they're following our lead. They're, they're going to do it. It, they're going to stay with the same date we are.
Okay.
As far as voting and everything for simplicity. So everything. Now, I, I got to tell you, the only thing from experience, and I haven't talked to John Campbell about this, but when I saw the school meeting and I just left it. I mean, the, the, my wife's got the screen and it's sideways, so it's not vertical like this. But I got to tell you, as a person running a meeting, it, it, it's, it's very difficult because you'd have to have somebody here or maybe two or three people feeding you information to try to say, okay, you know, John Doe has their hand up. And next in line, next in line, next in line. It's bad enough here where we've got 2, 4, 6, 8 and I rely on Olivia and Brandon to tell me about it. Can you picture 100 of those, of those little dots? And we're liable, we, we, we have had anywhere between 70 or 80 or whatever that do show up for the school and the town meeting. So you're going to see dots everywhere. Huh?
A couple years ago, we had 130.
Yep. Yep. And it all, and it always depends on how controversial whatever items we have. So.
The fire department brings them out.
What's that?
The fire department brings the votes out.
Well. Okay. And it depends on the topic that, 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 it, you know.
That's what I mean, that topic brings votes out.
Yeah, but, but there wasn't, that was like, what was it now? A year or two ago? That one, the merger? But it's not like a presidential election or that kind of thing. So typically, we might be able to drop back to, what would you say? Five or 600 people voting?
I'd say six to seven.
Yep. Yep. So I, what I want to do tonight is focus on, first of all, it's not passed. So let's move ahead with whatever items we have on the budget to talk about. And let's try to sort these out and to, and to kind of proceed forward with the assumption that we're not moving town meeting day. I don't know if we can have that happen, but you know what? It's, we've had lots of information in the last month or two. It's sometimes time to sort this out and, and to move forward because I think that it's, I think that's fair enough on whatever topics we have. So that's all I know. And any other information that goes on for the town meeting, whether those votes pass or I'll have Brandon email the full board. And so we'll all have all that same information. Okay? Let's go to.
Excuse me, can I just say this?
Yep.
I had a meeting yesterday, Zoom meeting with Secretary of State's office. And they, they're giving us the permission to decide whether we want to mail out our ballots or not. But it is a vote of the select board as to whether they want, and of course, all of us clerks. I mean, there are many clerks that are. Several clerks aren't going to do it, especially when they're in the combined school district because they have to go with what everybody wants. So they all have to do it together. So they're mailing, some towns are really mailing a lot, but.
So, so I've heard you say several times that you would like to see, if people call up for a, for, for the absentee ballot, you're happy to do that. On the other hand, I've also heard you say, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, say that mailing out all of this, you know, take the whole checklist and just mail them all out again didn't really work so hot. So.
It's a waste of money.
What, I know. So what would you like to see happen? I just listened to John really closely and I kind of liked almost all of that about what Cavendish is doing. So, so Floanne, when you called the Secretary of State, you saying that we need a board vote to help you?
No, no, the board can't say, can't tell me or the BCA to mail ballots to all of us.
Let, let me poll the board right now. What does everybody think? Does everybody understand the question?
Yes.
Okay, and it's very simple. If, if a voter requests a ballot, Floanne will send it out. She'll read the checklist and say, yes, you, you get one and it's out in the mail to you. As opposed to just, just mass mailing them all over the place. And I, you know, all I can remember is when we had the zoning issue, I was confronted by people who lived in two separate towns saying, why are we voting for this Dave? It's in your town. We have five zip codes in Weathersfield. That creates some of the problem. I had people in Springfield ask me about it and I had people in Reading. So without taking a vote, let's go around the table and just, I, I, myself, I'll lead off. I, I like Floanne's idea.
I support, I support the.
If, if a request comes in, have her deal with it.
Same.
Stick with the traditional dates?
Not yet, we haven't done that yet, but Floanne was asking about the ballots.
The only thing I'll add is that the state, there is money available if we did mail out ballots. That, there is, so it's not going to be an expense, but they didn't say whether or not they would pay the administrative expense. So.
Yep.
But I, I agree. I, I don't think it's necessary.
And, and you know, I don't want to interfere with what I think that I heard her say and how, how efficient whatever or non-efficient that it runs and for ease. That's just me. Okay, did you understand that? We're backing whatever you decide, which is, we're taking your advice. And as far as the people can call, just for the record now, if anybody's online or listening to SAPA TV, what that means is if you'd like a ballot to vote on, and we haven't, we haven't determined yet when the town meeting is, the date. But, but it's going to be either March or May, one or the other. And if you want a ballot, you can call the town clerk, email, however you would like to communicate with the town office. And a ballot at that time will be sent to you. Or, or you can show up in person, person, excuse me, on the day of voting. One or the other. Okay, let's go to number five. Uh, the fund balance policy. Brandon, why don't you help us along here?
Our current fund balance policy in Weathersfield is that the select board that adopted this policy recommends maintaining towns unrestricted funds, which includes the general fund balance, highway fund balance, and unspecified reserve between 13% and 15% of the total general and highway fund budgets. However, after reviewing this policy, I contacted VLCT and I also received other information from, from VLCT regarding our fund balance. And I believe, Dave, you spoke with someone as well, right?
Well, for clarification, this number five says, fund balance policy 19 VSA 312. That specifically only deals with highway funds?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a difference between general fund surplus funds and highway fund surplus funds. Now, in a deficit case, there's really no choice. You've got to have a special meeting. You've got to figure out where they came from and you, and we saw that once before in the history, probably 10 or 15 years ago, where we needed to have a hurry uptown meeting to recover that and we ended up putting them on the tax bills and it caused up quite, quite a stir. So I, I just wanted to note that because on your agenda, it says 19 VSA 312. And I think somewhere in the packet here, it's, it, it's written. That's total, that's a state law different than what is this policy.
Correct.
The only thing I know in the policy is, in the town policy, which I, which I'm reading here, it says that the, that this is a recommendation. That, that's, that's a long way from a mandate. Or some kind of Weathersfield law. A recommendation is, is just what it is. So, provided that it's there. You know, it may not always be there. This is, this is talking about fund balances, so. Surpluses, I mean, there might not be one. So then this becomes not applicable. So, so go, go ahead, Brandon, I'll let you keep going.
So, as Dave was saying, our, our current policy in this, this law, which reads, "The funds raised from town highway taxes shall not be used for any purpose other than that for which the tax was voted, subject to the provisions of this chapter." So if in any year money so voted is not expended, it shall be applied for the same purpose the following year. So in the strictest sense, you would look at the lines in the budget that had a surplus and then you'd apply that surplus and that amount within each line to the budget the following year. However, there's some, there's some latitude to that. VLCT responded and said the state allows the town voters to establish and fund reserve funds. So you can, you can transfer this to a reserve fund or you can do, you can keep some of it in there and show it as revenue and then expense it out on the other side. And that seems applicable to, to the law. So I guess really we need a decision from the board to determine what's the direction going to be on surpluses in the town? And what, what's the direction going to be in the highway department in FY 22? Right now, we have, we had a $211,000 surplus. We used $39,000 of that surplus for the warranty and maintenance plan on the grader that we received today. And we spent $12,476 on the salt shed roof repair project. So right now, we have a balance of $159,281. I would recommend keeping some of that money in the fund balance. But again, it's, it's up to you guys.
Well, if you read, if you scroll down on your iPads or whatever, I, it, it seems like in the years past, everybody has, has almost, whoever's emailed VLCT or anybody else for an opinion has, has actually helped them answer the question by the answer that they wanted. If you keep going down to the question that I posed them, I simply said who I was and it was to accounting at VLCT. And what do you do with this money? I opened, I opened it up for their opinion back to us. It wasn't, I have this and I have that and it wasn't directing traffic. And the council responded back, and you, everybody can read it, that it shows, the, the woman that responded said to, "The budget can show the surplus going, number one, going to another highway-related purpose as a line item." So it's what Brandon just said. So let's say if gravel is, and I'm not reading anything down here, so don't hold me to it. If gravel is $50,000, you can take some of this surplus and apply it to that line item. Okay? Or another line item, you can pick. Paving, something. And then number two, being used to fund a new or existing reserve fund. And we have two. We have one that is, what I'll just simplify as wheels, which means machinery. Or, and I'd, and I'd ask Brandon to read me what the other one was. I don't want to get it wrong. It was for road maintenance or, or, or infrastructure or something like that.
Yeah, we have a highway equipment acquisition fund, which currently has a balance of $135,000. We have a highway capital maintenance and improvements reserve fund, which has $75,000. And those are the two reserve funds that we currently have.
So here's a question right off the bat. If, if the, if the, I'll just call it wheel fund has $135,000, is any of that money going to be used? A, for the grader? And I, I just want you to answer me. Or B, to the new dump truck that's coming?
Ray, are you there? The only one I'm, I'm wondering about is, is the dump truck. I know he was talking to Steve recently.
We did grab some money, I think.
We did. Do you remember how, how much of, of the reserve fund we're using for the dump truck?
$75,000.
Okay.
Fourteen percent of that came from the sale of the previous truck. We put it in that reserve to take it back out for the purchase.
Okay.
So that's, so that, so for clarification, that balance today is at 135, but it's going to shrink to 60?
Correct.
Okay, good. This is all information that's going to help us determine what, where, I think, to direct traffic on what's going to happen here. So.
Has, from this year, the $30,000 gone in there yet? Brandon, for that?
What was that?
We had a lot in certain, allocated $33,000 to go back into that fund balance, or that, sorry, reserve. This year, not been deposited in there yet.
Yes, I believe Steve gave me updated numbers on this, but let me just confirm.
That's the only thing I'm not sure on, if that's gone in.
Okay.
And, and I think that, Ray, that would have been the penny on the tax rate on the, on the, the special article for highway? I think so, right? A year ago?
Yes, sir.
Yep, okay, good.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it's in this budget to do it again.
Not, well, not.
It's a special article. Oh, yes, it was. That's a special article.
Well, well, but, but let's stay focused on one thing at a time. So we, we're not talking about building another budget yet.
I don't want to forget that that money's in this budget to go into that fund. You're talking about that fund and there's money in this budget to go into that fund this year.
But what I'd like to clarify is what we have now. Not, not a proposal. Just trying to sort out what we have now. I, I've had a conversation with Brandon. This is what I hope we may be able to get to. Because it's significant, then I'm hoping that we can either use this, and I'm all on board with Brandon when he says we don't want to go down to zero because that's not a good idea either. Where we can have a thoughtful and a, and a, a mixed, if you will, a mixed proposal that, that would, with that kind of money in there and then on top of the annual operating budget, we should be able to walk through two years, not one year. That's what I think. Whereby we could fund some of that money and, and, and do what the, the VLCT said was. And I, and I've read another, I've also read another email from Steve Hyer that supports this. I don't know if he's on. But targeted, targeted funds are much more beneficial than unallocated funds as a definition. So in other words, and then John and I have had a conversation about this. When we, when we get into the budget thing and a little bit deeper here, historically, all through the years, the last one to fall with the first ax on it is paving. So what I want the board to think about is some, some kind of a distribution of these. We're not taking any money away from highway. We're just allocating them to an appropriate thing that may head off the potential of a tax increase for two years, not just this year. So for instance, if we took, if, if there's a balance left of 159, that's close enough to 160. I suspect that everybody around the table would probably agree that maybe $30,000 or some such a number like that left there in that, in that balance would be agreeable. So then we're really determining more like closer to $120,000 or so to be allocated to either paving or maybe, maybe we're interested in spending a little bit more money and, on gravel or some purchase that we historically always have. But now we're going to use this money to our advantage and, and not have to ask for it in the future. Or I think a significant, probably should, of another 50 at least, should go back into the wheel fund. So if we could think about a mix, I think that that would be the answer. Anybody have any thoughts?
What's the number in the undesigned fund balance in highway? Brandon? We got it written down here somewhere?
In the undesigned fund balance?
In highway?
Right the second?
A cumulative surplus.
So there's 211,000 minus the salt shed right now, but we're about to spend another $30,000, $39,000 on the grader maintenance and warranty. And what that did was allow us to save interest over the course of the loan. So the total balance after everything's accounted for is $159,281.
What was the $35,000? Oh, sorry.
$39,000 for the warranty and maintenance plan for.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
The brand new grader.
Yep.
Part of the new grader purchase.
Yep. That was something that was voted on a couple of months ago.
Yes. And then the other 12 or whatever, 14 was the salt shed repair.
Yep, $12,476.
So it's 160.
Yep. But I, what I'm proposing is that we don't consider 160, that we consider closer to 120 or 30 because we leave the other in there for.
Are you proposing keeping anything in, in a reserve, in a designated reserve fund in highway?
20 or 30. So the other would be targeted. And that is on top of the annual operating budget. So it's, so we're, and we're not taking any money away from highway. I want to keep repeating myself. If we add on to paving or we put it into the, the motorized wheel fund or even some into the maintenance fund or, or any other line item. This, this information says that we could put it in a line item that somebody feels as though has been shorted for years or something or.
Guardrails.
Something, I don't know what. It, I mean, something where there's a use and we've been neglecting. Did you want to say something, Ray? I, I, or anybody online?
Yeah, I got, I got a quick question.
Okay.
Does anybody feel that it might be better just to put it, and put some in the wheel fund like you want, but then put the rest in the capital reserve for infrastructure? And that way, if you want to do guardrails or if I'm a little short on a paving project or I need some culverts, I can just put a request into either Brandon or the board, however that works, then we can take the money out. Instead of saving $30,000 into paving, but not really having a paving project climbed up. If you put it in that reserve, we can take it out at any time and use it for anything like guardrail or, or paving or replacing some culverts or whatever we're falling short on instead of asking for more tax dollars any time in the future, not just the next two years.
He's right. It gives a lot more flexibility in the capital one because it's not specific.
Yeah. Do you have a question, Joe?
Well, yeah, just kind of spitballing off of that. Additionally, if we put it into a reserve fund,
Additionally, if we put it into a reserve fund, it's not going to show on our yearly budget, so we're not going to be just running an inflated budget year after year because we had it before, which, from time to time happens, I mean, we're dealing with a big surplus now. I would almost suggest splitting what our remaining 120 between the two accounts, between the two reserves, and leaving them 30,000 undesignated.
It, it doesn't, um, it's not going anywhere, I just, I just, um, there's a question that's going to come after this one, which is, okay, then how do, how do we get two years in a row where this has happened with the, with the regular operating budget, too? So, I, and I don't know where that's happening, but, but it was happening, so. And, and things are going to change a little, I mean, I get it all, diesel fuel's rising, some of these things are, 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 uh, moving targets a little bit. We're not having a, to speak of, we're not really having a harsh winter yet, and it doesn't look that way for the next 10 days either, so, it'll be salting, or sanding, but not plowing. So, it is what it is. Does, does the board comfortable with taking this up right now and determining, because if so, then let's hit a motion on the floor?
Oh, I'm not going to be the one.
You're not?
It was your idea.
It was, it wasn't my idea.
It was Ray's idea. Is there any other opinion, like, at all? Anybody else get something different in mind?
Well.
I was looking at, if, if, sorry. I, I, I was just going to ask about loans, but I, I went down through and I looked at the loans, and I think we're probably better off putting it in the, in those two accounts, like you said, you split it, put it in the two accounts, and leave the 30,000 in, uh, I, I, I think the budget already has a surplus built into it, but, but I do agree also with Dave saying we're going to see a good share of that probably disappear in increased costs through this year.
Well, last time a, a, a surplus showed up, and I remember you were on the Budget Committee, we, we did pay off debt.
Yes.
And that had a effect on budgets coming up, because all of a sudden those payments weren't there.
This will put, though, and, and when I, we did get clarification, there's already 75,000 in the maintenance fund right now. To add another 60, that, that pushes that up like into, into unseen territory. You know, 135,000 dollars into a fund for whatever infrastructure is. Um, if we were going to do paving or whatever, normally we either go for a, a bigger loan like we just did with the Center Road or something, and we wouldn't eat into that amount to do that. I guess, I see the need where we're going to need more machinery than we are into that fund. So I guess what I would say is, if that went like 80, 40, that might be better for me. So 80 into the Wheel Fund, we have 120 to distribute.
Yeah, we did just.
And then 40 into infrastructure would still push the, the infrastructure up to 115,000 dollars.
You're going to have this opportunity very often.
No, we're not.
And the paving, every year paving is, is underfunded.
The first one to get.
Traditionally, every, every time.
Yep.
I, I, my personally, I'd rather see it going to the, the, the other reserve, not with, the other way around there.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sure. Uh, you, you talked about, you foresee it more in, in Wheels and Stuff, I mean, we just bought a grader, we just bought a truck, a dump truck, what are we looking at next? That's going to, in the, in the. Yeah, Ray, what's, what's next in the lineup? I mean, we've got, we've got a new grader, we have a new truck, dump truck.
Yeah, 550 in 2023. But, you know, we have a dump truck that'll be paid off that same year, so the payments will, won't overlap. I, I personally, I personally kind of lean towards John. Um, we traditionally book money at one cent, either Wheel Fund, Dump, or, or Infrastructure. And usually it just comes from surplus money that you guys allocate occasionally right now. And that just gives us more flexibility, especially if we're going to try to put 33,000 into Wheel Fund again next year. That's our view.
Well, that's on the table, though, for discussion, the, the, Mike just asked about that. So I, I don't know that we're going to be doubling up on things, because we're taking advantage of the position that we're in. Um, this is a pleasant surprise, there's no question about it. And John's right, it doesn't happen very often.
I just, I just think it's a huge shot in the arm to the paving, um, paving budget and the paving plan we're trying to implement, if we could put that money in there.
How much?
I was thinking 75, 25, but, um, you know, 50, 50 would, would be okay, I guess, but I would recommend 525, higher, higher to the capital reserve for infrastructure. Because that, how would it affect the budget the most? You don't owe any enough shortfall, or culvert fail, or things like that, that jump up flooding. All this money can be tapped for those purposes. With approval from the board, obviously. So if I have a paving project coming up, um, it would have been next year. Uh, it's three quarters of a mile, I have a bunch of culverts to replace, I only have enough money in my budget to replace three quarters of the culverts right now. So, I have another five dollars that I need for culverts, I could tap this fund and use it, with all the culverts replaced before we pay it. That's just, that's how I, I think about it. Instead of bumping the culvert budget up in this year's budget, having an increase in taxes, that money will be in there to help us cushion that over the course of several years.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to agree a little bit with that, too, I don't know about the numbers exactly the same as, as Ray, but I, I mean, I think we we just bought a grader, we just bought a dump truck, we, I mean, I think we need it for that. Roads, the paving, the culverts, the, you know, guardrails that we haven't done, that kind of stuff. That's my, that's mine. But, I think Dave needs to.
I get, I got to make one comment, that is, we did not set a town meeting day, but if we stick with the traditional one, we can't sit here looking at each other.
That's what I'm feeling.
Move 60 into, I'll make a motion, move 60,000 dollars into the Wheel Account, 60,000 into the, um, capital improvement, and keep the balance for an odd designated fund.
I'll second that.
Well, motion been made and seconded to transfer 60,000 dollars into the Motorized Apparatus Fund of Highway, 60,000 dollars into the general maintenance, uh, infrastructure of Highway, the two reserve accounts, and to leave the balance of 30,000 dollars, which is the leftover, um, audited Highway surplus of FY20.
Undesignated.
Yes, as the undesignated, because it's, I don't know, is, I don't even know on a percentage basis, it's like 1 or 2% or whatever, 2% or whatever it would be. Is there, are there any discussion?
My only question comes back to paving. Uh, educate me on, um, typically if we do a large paving project, don't, don't we get grants or something, and we have matching?
Every seven years.
Okay, we just had that.
Just got one.
So we're going to be seven years before we're going to see a match. So if we have anything we have to do, uh, infrastructure-wise, with either paving or gravel or whatever was in that list, we're going to pay for it.
Well, not gravel, typically it's a loan. So paving, paving has a life.
You never know, you could have a washout, you got to buy extra gravel.
Those grants are only good for Class II roads. You have a lot of paved roads that are Class II, and we have to borrow the money entirely. So the plan going forward is to slowly use that 50,000 to build up and do a paving project without borrowing money on these smaller roads. And it's, right now, I've got it saved up, so the next project's three quarters of a mile, I have almost enough money in there between, what, this year, and if it gets approved next year, to do the job.
To answer your question, typically, though, it's not uncommon to take a loan out, because the life of the road is, you know, when we redo a paving road, I mean, it's going to go at least 10 or 20 years typically, before we get back to it. So, it's not unheard of for us to take a loan out, like we did the Center Road. Did we get, did we get any aid on the Center Road?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we had aid for half of it, and we took out a loan for the other half, so we did it all in one year, instead of doing it.
Luckily, we had the money to do a lot of reservoir road out of the same pot, which worked out really well.
Yeah, we ended up doing eight tenths of a mile down there that really needed it.
There's a motion that's been made on the floor to split this right in the middle for, for, um, 60, 60, and, uh, leave 30. Any further discussion?
By, my reason for asking that question is, Ray had put up 90, 30, John's gone 60, 60. It's, it's 60, 60, or 50, 50, 60, 60, where we want to be. Or do we, or do we want more in the paving?
Uh, no, I don't, and, and because we just drained by buying the dump truck and the grader, we've drained the Wheel Fund down to 65,000 dollars. We can't have that.
Okay, very good. I'm happy.
Everybody follow that? I mean, we're going to use 70,000, we just haven't written the check yet for the dump truck.
Right. We tend to buy more than we pay.
It's already, it's, I don't know if it's being built, or some of it's delivered, or whatever. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, let's go to number six, which is, um, now we get into, how do you want to do this, Brandon? Take up Highway budget first? Am I reading that, am I reading that right?
Yeah, we have the revised budget narrative, and, which consists of, um, the FY22 budget proposals for tonight, but then we also have compensation reports that go along with each one of those, um, budget discussions. In Highway, there's no compensation report. Um, so we're, we're strictly discussing, um, the third pass of the, of the Highway budget.
Anybody have any questions on the, um, the Highway budget? I know we've, when you, when you turn to the last page, what we're going to, what we're going to end up with is a motion and a second, and ultimately an approval of, um, if we, if we see the last, um, if we see the last line in green, when it says whatever the proposed budget is, so we're going to need a motion in any event to say, you know, um, somebody's going to move for a Highway budget of whatever number they'd like to plug in, but right now it says 1,317,392. And then we will, uh, also say, of which, well, we can't do that tonight, because we're not going to, we're not going to set the tax rate, but, but then you turn back to the first page, the very first one in orange, where it says the proposed tax Highway is 946,770, which is the exact number that it was a year ago. So that's how the article is going to be read. It's going to be, the budget's going to be, needing to be approved for 1,300, of which nine, uh, if, if, if people are agreeable to do that, uh, of which 946,770. Now, Brandon and I have talked, and throughout all of these budget discussions that we've had, on all of it, we are assuming that the grand list is the same. Historically, these budgets are really not hard. People, people like to make them hard, but they're really not that hard. There is, there is only a few things that you need to pay attention to. One is state aid. We, we don't know what that's going to be, state aid to Highway, let's just pick on Highway for a moment. And then we have, um, uh, the grand list, which is the total valuations of all the properties in town. And then you have the, the, the total number of dollars that you need, which is the 1,300 and something thousand. So then you divide that number into the grand list, and you end up, or, or you subtract it, sorry, from the, the other income that you have from Highway, meaning state aid, or grants, or anything else, non-taxable revenue. And then you end up with what you have to do for property taxes. So it's conceivable, historically speaking, the grand list rises by about maybe a half a percent a year. The last three or four years, or even before that a little bit, we've had significantly more rises, because we had the power plant upgrade. So, um, we are assuming that the grand list is the same.
Usually ticks up unless it's a big fire or something.
Yeah, and that, that, you know, I don't, I don't see that happening. So, to say that you, the taxes are going to be the same is a little bit off, because i- if we kept the same amount of money that we're raising, it probably means a little bit of a downtick on the tax rate. By using the same money as we did a year ago. Mike?
Um, I, I think this is, this is, this is great, and what you're talking about is fine. Um, the one thing that I would like to see, um, as, not, not now, I'm good with this, I can vote on this, I, I'll be happy to make a motion and vote on this. Um, but when it comes time, uh, down the road, we're going to get numbers from the state that we don't know which way they will go. They will also have an effect on our, on the tax rate. Taxes, you know, with COVID and stuff, we may see a hit in aid to Highway, or aid to, you know, any other things that come from the state, um, uh, that could affect that. Um, so what I, what I'd like to see, prepared, uh, for when we get to that point, is, is an actuals, li- a line-to-line actuals from 2020?
Yep.
That we can look at, so that we can go across here and say, okay, well, we, you know, if we need to make adjustments, we can take a look and see where to do that.
If we go to the back page, we're actually, you know, we're, we're, we're raising expenses in the Highway from 1,274,557 to 1,317,392 dollars. So, but we're keeping the taxes the same. So somewhere in here, there's an increase in revenue to make up for that.
Yeah, where?
Of, just do the math.
It's more to do with cost saving on insurance than it is increase in revenue, I believe, Brandon. That was one of the big ones, is the health insurance.
Yep.
But, but there's, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead.
But, but there's also, uh, for two years in a row, what resulted in the 211,000 dollar surplus is, is a moving forward of almost 100,000 dollars in surplus revenues.
Yeah, so what we're going to see now that we've dropped that 159, 281 down to 30, we're going to see 129,281 drop from our revenues, and the same amount drop from our expenses. So I'll actually, I can give you that number really quick.
Doesn't affect the bottom line, though.
No, it, it doesn't affect the bottom line.
No, and, and like I said, it'll only matter when we get there. I just want to have something I can look at to say.
will be our revenues and our expenses.
Do you have a question, John?
Yeah, just, either Raymond or, or Brandon, the, the state aid number, I wasn't able to get the right avenue to find that number. Where, where'd it come from?
That number came from the average.
Okay, so nobody reached out to the state to see?
I did, we, there's no information from the state at this time regarding our state aid to Highway.
Okay.
But for, for the purposes of what we're using, it's, it's, you know, Brandon is speculating that it's going to be the same. At, at approximately, he says 143, last year was 142.
Projecting.
Yeah, and that's no different than any other year.
You didn't like, you didn't like that word?
I didn't like that word.
Speculating.
The difference is Highway, the gasoline tax revenues are way down. And that's where that money comes from.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to, um, accept the Highway budget at 1,317,392 dollars. And, um.
Wait.
We'll, we'll set the tax rate later.
Just a minute.
Let's remove the, the 100 and, uh, let's remove the 159,000 dollar surplus and, and reduce that number by, um,
120,000.
Dollars.
Well, not the full amount, Brandon. Wasn't it, what, didn't we agree on 120?
Yes. So, so the correct number is 1,188,111 dollars.
1,188,111 dollars.
Yes.
That's the motion.
And, and then I, then you should put in that motion, of which 946,770 shall be raised by taxes.
It's proposed to be raised by taxes, how's that?
Okay. Fair enough, because you need to have, you need to have the breakdown.
Yes.
And, and we'll have one more meeting if we made.
Yeah, do, do discuss that, yes.
Check the numbers.
Yep, yep, yep. And then, now, why that's important is politically, we're trying to do exactly the same thing that we did a year ago. I mean, it's hard to argue with that, if, if, if you're a voter. To say that we're trying to hold the line, and we're doing exactly the same thing, and we're going to take care of the roads exactly the same way. It's just hard, it's just hard to argue with that.
Um.
Was there, was there a second to that motion?
I'll make, I'll second it.
Okay.
One second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the Highway budget for FY22 at 1,188,111 dollars, of which 946,770 shall be raised by taxes. Any discussion? Yes?
Are we still going to include the 33,000 to the Wheel Fund?
That's not located in the budget, is it? I think that was a special article.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, because on the sheet it shows in the budget.
But it says right beside it, separate article. So it may or may be.
I showed it, I showed it in the numbers, so if we're going to remove that, um.
You showed it in the very, in the, in the. You showed it in the very, in the.
Revenues and in the expenses already.
First page.
In the, you showed it in the 1,188,000?
I did.
Yes.
Okay, then, well, that's.
It's not a special article, man. If it's in there, it's not a special article.
Well, but Mike said it was on the thing. He put it on, Brandon happened to add it. Well, hold on, let me, before anybody else does it, here's a question for the board. Do you want a special article or would you like 33,000 put in the, in the highway budget? We can do it either way.
I think the voters are used to seeing those numbers and they've always been supportive, so let's leave it like we've done it.
By a separate article?
Yeah, for years and years and years.
Okay, but I'm just saying.
Although I will say they're not always approved, but as a general rule, they, you present a budget that's reasonable, the voters will get behind it.
Well, no, my question was different. My question was, do you want the 33,000 within the budget or do you want it as a separate article voting wise?
He said a separate article.
You just said separate article, okay. Okay. So do you take, so the question is, do you take that out of the number that Mike just made the motion?
Yes.
Because it doesn't come back into the budget unless, until the voters vote for it.
Did you also?
Vote for it, then, then the tax rate would increase from what we're proposing.
Did you also include it in the second number? So last year was 946,770, the part of the annual operating budget? Or did it include the $33,000 separate article?
It included it.
The separate article increased the budget. After they voted on it, it increased the budget. The way you have it right now won't increase the budget that's already in the budget. If you take it out and you have a separate article, you've got to go up 33,001 cent, whatever it is.
That's correct.
Right now, it's in the budget and if they pass the budget, you're guaranteed to get it without having to ask for a separate article.
That's right.
Which I'm okay with. I just wanted to point out to Brandon that in the past, what we've seen is the budget, and there'll be a spreadsheet when we do town meeting, and they put all the articles and add them all up and say, if you pass all of these, it will change your rate to this.
Okay.
Here's the budget, here's what you're going to vote on, that raises the budget to this. So that people can actually see all that stuff.
Can we get clarification?
I don't care if it's in the budget or not, or an article.
Can we get clarification on the motion? So the numbers, I want it to be correct.
That's, yes, that's what I'm trying to, but you can't get there until you decide whether you're going to put this in the budget or you're going to put it as an article.
John, let's go around the table. John wanted it to be separate. Joey?
Separate.
Separate. Paul?
I'm okay with it separate too, because that's what we've done.
Then we'll leave it separate and that changes the number to 1,155,111.
And I had one additional change since there was 159,281 in the fund balance. When we remove 120, it's actually going to leave 29,281, so it would be 1,154,392.
I only subtracted 120. I didn't subtract 159.
No, he didn't.
He did the differential.
He didn't, he didn't.
We keep seeing leaving 30. We're actually leaving 39 something.
No, we're leaving 29.
29, John. 29 and something.
29,281.
But the budget line says that it's, where'd it go? Where is it? 159,281, audited fund balance carry forward. So that line is in there, is it in there on the expense side?
Yeah, but the number that you just presented assumes that it was 30K flat that we left in the fund balance.
I can't understand you through your mask.
Correct. The number that you just spoke, that number assumes that there's 30K, 30,000 going, staying in the fund balance, but it's actually 29,281. So that would change the number if there was just 30 as a flat number.
I didn't deal with it from that direction though, Brandon. I only subtracted the 120 from the total.
Brandon's got it right.
What's the number?
It's 1,154,392.
392?
Yep.
That is the number.
The next, the only other question left is, was the 946,770, did that include the $33,000 separate article from FY20 or not?
One second.
I just took that out.
Hold on. You took, we took it out of the top number, but did we take it out of the bottom number? The amount to be raised by taxes. Did it include it or did it not include it?
You said 2020, Dave. Do you mean 2021?
No, FY20, last year when we voted, and the, I'm using the tax rate from last year, the amount to be raised by taxes was 946,770. Did that number include the $33,000 separate article that was approved or not?
No, no.
Okay.
You had a tax increase of 33,000 as soon as they voted it yes.
Okay, so the amount of, so the amount to be raised by taxes for highway really wasn't 946. It was 979.
No.
I'm not sure.
It was raised by highway for 9, what the taxpayers voted on for the highway budget. The separate article is completely separate, has nothing to do with the highway budget.
Okay.
So you're not adding, you're over that budget line, it'll be a separate article.
I'm just trying to get the correct wording in for the article for us to pass the motion around the table.
It's 946,770 to be raised by taxes.
Okay, good. Everybody understand that?
Yep.
So we're trying to get to the top number, which is, we're trying to create the article that's actually going to be voted on by the voters. So it's going to be, you know, shall the voters of Weathersfield vote on the highway fund of, for FY21, '22 of 1,154,392, of which 946,770 will be raised for taxes. Everybody get that? Any other discussion on the motion?
It did say that proposed to be raised by taxes.
Yep, yep, okay. Yeah, we're not going to set that yet. Right. We're trying to frame in what we're talking about. Now, we're going to have the discussion in a minute after we pass this motion about that $33,000 separate article. We need another vote to do that, okay? Any other discussion about the motion to pass the highway fund budget for FY22? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Now I want to hear a motion that says that if you want to, now bear in mind, we just put, we're going to have 135 after we transferred the balance and after we write the check for the dump truck and the grader, sort out all the dust falls, we'll have 125,000 in the set aside for the wheel fund at highway. Okay? Is there any interest in having an additional $33,000 on a separate article to be voted on?
Paul? One quick question on that. That $33,000, just help me out, what exactly can that be spent on?
Motorized apparatus.
Motorized.
Whatever the article says, which.
Well, the last one was for motorized.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, yep, yep. Not like building or paving or nothing like that.
Right.
You know, dump truck, loader, grader, wheels.
That gets you up about a buck sixty, so.
What's that?
That'll get you almost to a buck sixty.
Yep, need a motion to do that if we'd like to do that, to vote on again.
Make a motion and warrant a special article for reserve fund motorized highway equipment for 33,000.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded to approve a special article to be voted on the ballot of, for this year, of $33,000 designated to Highway Reserve Fund for motorized apparatus. The reason why, there's no magic to this 33,000, it's about one cent on your tax bill.
Yep.
Okay? Everybody clear? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. And we thought we weren't going to get anything done and it's 7:30. Next up, Brandon. Okay, hey Ray, the highway budget's set.
Thank you. You guys all set with me?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yep.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Yep. All right. What's up? Go ahead, Mike.
I'll make a motion to skip to item three as the town clerk is present in the room. They're waiting probably to deal with this.
I did one here, we discussed an on-town meeting.
On-town meeting?
We did that already.
Yeah, I know. But I didn't know, I know you change things around sometimes.
Yeah, well, we don't have enough information. We don't have the authority to do that yet anyway. I kind of want to wait for formalities, but I don't think there's going to be a problem, but we're not going to go back to that. We're going to take.
Listen, so Floian has at least an idea where we're going. Let's just kind of do a straw poll on where we think we should be. At the last meeting, we talked about sliding everything to May, traditional, if you will, and have it outdoors, and that was the reason to go to May. The other alternative is stick with the traditional dates and don't have an in-person meeting. I, I think I'll stick with our original plan, which is going to May. We have nothing, there's no, the only disadvantage of that is if any of the budgets fail, it makes a very tight timeline to make a revote before July 1st. And the way I understand it, I believe the school budget starts, I don't know why, but somebody said that it starts June 1st. That.
30th. I had a conversation with David Baker and he said that the law something allows them to spend up to something like 80%, 87% of their budget, even though it may not come in time to, the year end is 6:30 and the new year's the same as us.
Well, still doesn't have a budget.
Yeah, so, so they spend, they're still, they're still in business.
Yeah.
But they would have to, if, we're speculating that a budget would go down. We don't know that.
We don't.
So, that's all. Paul?
Sorry, quick question. As far as keeping it the same date and then having a meeting online, I agree with Dave to the fact that it is kind of complicated to, you know, have that many people online. But I do believe it's doable and I think that there's some, some of us that are, you know, can do that. I've watched Claremont does some of this, not to that level, not 100 people on there, but they use different meeting platform than what we have here. You can actually see hands raised. And I know DeForest does some stuff over there too. They actually will call out, you know, have a list of people. But yes, I think you need somebody, at least one or two helping Dave with that. That would be the only thing for me about keeping it that way, because I want to make sure we hear the people.
I'm pretty confident that we could hold a virtual meeting and do it effectively.
What were the ramifications?
You're not going to vote on anything.
No, right, no, right.
I mean, I don't, I don't see, after listening to what John just said, I guess I'm leaning more to leave it alone because, but, but having said that, I don't think I want to, I'm not ready to decide tonight because I haven't reached out to the school. Our budgets seem simpler than the schools, okay? They just do. So even for presentation wise, I think ours, when you're asking people to spend the same money or maybe even, I think as we go down here, maybe a little less money or take advantage of the surpluses, however you want to define it, it's a lot easier presentation than to, than to say that we were having some great big building proposal or whatever. So, but I haven't reached out to the school. I don't know the length of their presentation. I agree with the school when they say they want it to be together, either have it in March or May. Ours is going to be simple. I just don't see it to be complicated. Presentation wise, I agree with you, Paul.
Mine's to leave it and try to, try to pre-plan how we're going to, how we can do that and maybe even try some sort of a test run or something.
Joey?
Just for all of our info, I've actually talked to a few community members about, you know, what would you prefer, this or that, and the majority of people, for whatever reason, say they would just as soon stick with a regular date in March.
Do you have any opinion, man?
My only question is, could we be ready for March? Do you think we're on schedule to get done with what we've got to?
We're going to move.
Well, we were doing good there for a minute.
Yep.
I'm fine with it. We just got to get it done.
Let's go right to, I don't have an objection to move the, without objection, let's go to Floian first and then, I mean, she's here. I, I, let, Brandon wanted to lead us through this.
So as the, as the budget currently sits, the budget will decrease by $185. As shown on page seven of this proposal, the town clerk's office anticipates a $2,970 increase in operating revenue. There's no variance in revenues for computerization, fault fee, or the other category. Personnel expenses have decreased by $1,188. Office expenses increased by 3973. And that's primarily because I took Nemrick services and I split those services across the budgets that use those modules to more adequately account for those expenses across the respective departments. And I did the same with IT services. So there's, there's definitely an increase there coming from the admin budget, but it's all within the general fund. So one of, one of the items that we discussed in the last meeting was a compensation report that's coupled with this budget narrative. So we did do a compensation report on the town clerk's office and the data is shown within the compensation report, the average salary for town clerks in Vermont in relation to the data analyzed is $41,273. This places Weathersfield on 15th out of 59 other cities and towns that responded to VLC T data for 2020. The salary in Weathersfield for this position is $42,717. The average hourly rate for a town clerk in Vermont is 2553. And, and the Weathersfield town clerk places 41 out of 59 on this scale. In the previous meeting, there was, there was some discussion regarding treating all employees in Weathersfield equally. I believe that we're doing a 2% increase across the board for all town employees and that there will be no exceptions to this. But after discussing this with the town clerk, we, she's budgeted right now for 30, for 30 hours. And she's been working, I mean, she's here on the weekends when I'm here. This has been consistent for a very long time. So what, what we're proposing is, is one, you know, she is down an assistant right now. But we have had, had very productive conversations regarding that position and how we're going to look at that moving forward. I'm proposing a three-hour increase weekly for the town clerk. And what that would do is it'd bring her from 30 hours to 33 hours weekly. And that would bring the personnel line to $46,800. Right now, she's been working within, within those 30 hours, but, but working way, far more than those 30 hours and just not being compensated because it is, it was salaried for a long time at 30 hours. So the recommendation is to, to not increase the wage any more than 2%, but to increase the hours by three hours weekly. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, Paul. Just a quick question in general on all that. We set the hours that the elected officials work? Oh, okay.
Town clerks set their own hours.
Okay, so town clerks set their own hours. So.
But we budget the money.
No, right, we budget, we budget this money. But by going to three hours more, what is that, this is going to get more work done in here, but is, how is that affecting, how's that affecting the increase in pay? It's actually going to go down.
No, because currently, well, for a very long time, the town clerk in Weathersfield has been budgeted for 30 hours weekly. So even if, I mean, if you're budgeted for 30 hours and you work 40, the money is not there to cover those additional hours.
Right, it's still.
So what we're proposing is to kind of meet in the middle here and, and go to three additional hours. So it'd move from 30 to 33 hours, which would increase that line.
Right, so we went from 42,100, 42,717 to what now then for that line?
It would be to 46,800. I mean, that would include an additional three hours weekly or 156 hours per year.
And then, I, I have another quick question on, on that, too. So, um, this is, it's an elected position, like the listers and, and treasurer and stuff. Obviously Floanne's been doing, how, how long, how long have we been doing this? Can I, can I ask? 35?
Phew!
Yeah, so, so, so what, what I'm curious about is when you, when you have an elected official position, and, you know, just take Floanne per se out of this, but you have, hopefully, you know, she'll get re-elected and, and be okay this, this year, but it, it is an elected position, so you could have somebody new, and it could be somebody straight off the street that's never, doesn't have any experience. Floanne definitely deserves, you know, as, as you increase with experience and all that, you increase with wage, too.
Yes.
How, how does, so we're, we're, we need to look and pay attention to a budget item for pay, based on the position, the job, not necessarily, in my mind, necessarily who's, who might be there, because the opportunity could be, they said you could get somebody off, just that doesn't have any experience, so if it gets voted in, they get voted in.
And the line could change.
Then you would change it afterwards?
Yeah, so I think.
Okay, how does that work?
You know, and, and we'd also have to look at, at the structure of that office, once a new town clerk was voted in, because that structure could change, maybe they, they filled the assistant position at more money, or they did it for less money, so you could revisit both.
But you'd have, in order to get more money or change this money, or, or, you could always go less, because the voters voted dissent, correct? Could we do that?
I don't see, I mean, the voters voted in that line based on, based on the current situation, which is a, a town clerk that's been here for 35 years. I think, I don't.
Can I say something, Suzanne?
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's always based on the experience and the longevity, so if you have someone new come in, the town sets the rate, the pay rate, so you would, you would give the town manager the authority if someone new comes in to set that rate. This rate that you're budgeting for right now is on disposition with 35 years and their experience, so it would not be automatically someone new comes in, gets the same, same amount and same benefits, that would be not the case.
Okay, so even though it's, it's budgeted here and the voters would vote on this, if somebody else got that position, then the town manager could say, no, we're gonna back that money down. What would be, what would happen to the rest of the money that's there?
So, the select board would have to decide, I mean, we'd have a surplus in that line, so it would be in a, in the same, it would move to this, the general fund surplus, the select board would determine what to do with that money.
No, that's off, that, that's perfect, I'm.
Yeah, I think it's really important to, to note that we didn't increase, we're, we're still decreasing the budget by $185, so that, there's no increases in the, in the overall budget.
John?
Brandon, I'm gonna question your, your figure, 468. Right now, she's making, if you do the math, a 2738, based on a 30-hour week. If you multiply that times 102%, it comes out 2792, and you multiply that times 700, excuse me, 1,716 hours, it comes out to 47,910, so I'm not sure where the 46 came from, 468.
I don't, let me see here.
For the.
So I'm, I'm, I'm not increasing, I'm not increasing the rate, John, I'm just going from 4217, I'm adding 4271, which includes 2738.
I, I can see that now, but that, I mean, you're not even giving her the 2% that everybody else is getting.
I've, I've been working, I'll tell you, when I took over for Carol, I did not get Carol's pay. I was making $6 an hour.
That sounds good.
In 1997, okay? And then eventually, eventually worked myself out. However, it does true that if a new clerk came in, it would not be at my rate of pay at all. And the same, an assistant, when I'm being assistant, won't be the same rate of pay as when new clerk, because they're not experienced, right? So you look at it like every three months, you know, how they're doing and this and that. So, I have not got a raise in 20 years, just over 1.5% or 2% or whatever you got. And I have been working probably on an average of 45 to 50 hours a year. Never mind the election, I mean, a lot more from the election, I worked at home at night, I worked here weekends, I finally gave up Sundays, because I do live with somebody that really didn't like that, and, um, I have not been compensated at all for all the work that I've done. I've presided over how many elections that we've never had a problem with.
Yep.
And God forbid, we have another problem, I mean, another problem in the future would be terrible. But I think, um, worth, I am giving you, I shouldn't say I'm giving you, I am giving up three hours of my time, which I'm here anyway. I'm here, I'm here, I won't say double my time, double 30, I would say, if you're part of that time, 40, 45 hours, you know, a week, and getting paid for 30 all these years. Even when I haven't assisted, I still have to work extra, because they've had my assistance.
That changes the thought process and the math significantly.
Completely for me, because, because I'm, I'm looking at, at what Brandon is proposing here is semantics, and I, I would rather, i- in that case, just go back to the, the original proposal for the 6%, give her the raise, and leave it at 30 hours.
And make that the salary.
And just make that the salary, just give her the.
Okay, that's fine.
Rather than getting, I mean, like I said, to me, it's just semantics. She's gonna continue to work 40 to 45 hours a week, she's doing now. So it's.
It's very similar to most of our salaries, including Brandon, I mean, they, he doesn't work 40 hours a week.
I, I do have a question that goes across the board on compensation reports.
Yes.
These, the, the numbers shown here are only wages and do not include any other parts of the benefit package, is that correct?
Correct.
The problem I'm just listening to is, though, the breakdown here is a little bit not, it's, it's hard to compare, because you're talking about a salaried employee versus an hourly employee. So if I'm hearing somebody say, you know, I'm, I'm putting in way more time, well, then perhaps the answer is to go by the hour, because, because anybody else in the real world, if you think you're working 50 hours and you're getting paid for 30, well, then you, you would advocate to just pay me by the hour then, and I'll still work 50 hours and make more money. So, it is what it is, but the, but the.
That could cost us even more.
Well, yeah, but, but, well, but, well, not necessarily, because the flip side of that means you're on a time clock and you're under the purview, which I guess the elected officials are not, but, but you're under the management of somebody who, who's going to look at the clock and say, no, you didn't work at the hour that you said you did. So, so there's a, there's a check in the balance there, that, so the, the salaried employees have a lot of flexibility, y- yes, they may put in hours, but, but they can also choose not to work, and say, you know what, I've given all, so I'm not coming in today, as opposed to the time clock, which says, you're supposed to be here, you're supposed to do work, and then you have a supervisor saying, uh-oh, that you weren't. So, there's a, there's a line there. Did you have a question, Joe?
Yeah, I was actually, I was gonna go down the same path as you, hearing what I'm hearing from Floanne, and maybe it's, it's not easy just to look at a piece of paper and say, oh, we pay this much, not knowing how much work she actually does. I don't, I would actually say maybe switching her to hourly would be more fair overall, even to the town. We have to pay somebody for the work they're doing.
Then you, you got other positions that are gonna be exactly the same, all highway, DPW chief, department, uh, police chief, and the town manager, all are on salary and all probably working substantially more than 40.
I don't even think about what his hours are.
Well, but, but, but.
We just have to cut his rate.
How about Raymond?
$6 an hour.
Then you can start milking cows. I'm looking for, let's, we're gonna start winding these things up, because we're getting off track. I'm looking for a motion to accept the town clerk's budget as presented.
Someone's up, yeah, the second.
The second.
Well, you better reevaluate this, not reiterate, reiterate, as far as, am I doing three hours, I'm gonna get $30 an hour?
Well, it's, it's, it's as, it's as, as presented, I was careful when I, when I said.
Salaried, but you get the increase.
Was that three hours?
It was three hours. Yep.
Well, that's the presentation.
Even if I was on the clock, right, and it's four o'clock, I'm still, I don't know.
Well, that's why I say it's semantics, i- i- it's just semantics on this page, because you're, you're, you're already working the hours.
But for, but for tonight, all we have to go by is this sheet that we were presenting.
Yeah.
So, so I'm, there's a motion that's just been made and seconded to adopt the FY22 town clerk budget as presented to us tonight. Motion been made seconded, any discussion? Paul?
Quickly, I just wanted to thank you for all the years that you have done, and when I was asking that question earlier, I just wanted you to know, because I was, I was worried about somebody coming in new and not, and I, I, I definitely think that you deserve, you know, or anybody working that long with the experience and all that, so.
Joey?
And I, I also wanted to point out that even though it's a $4,000 increase, that there's a $3,000 cut in the assistant, so she's literally doing everything herself.
Yeah. And, and, and from a discussion that I had with Brandon, I'm, I'm happy to, to, to listen to some help that he's going to, to help her try to sort that out. So that's, that's going on, that's an ongoing discussion, so that's gonna be helpful. Is there any other discussion about the FY22 budget for the town clerk?
And you are running again?
I am.
Punishment. And it's a three-year.
Oppose, I might add, probably.
Well, it's a three-year term, isn't it? Yeah, nice, so you're locked in.
I, I won't know if I'm on opposed or opposed, what, 25?
25.
Is that one, 25, yep. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, good. Thank you, thank you, Floanne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, Floanne.
Okay. Let's go, let's go back now to, what's the next one on the list?
Listers.
Okay. Brandon, can you?
Oh, yes, sir.
Take us through this one. Okay, so we're checking off, we're doing pretty good, we've got highway and town clerk, good.
All right, so, uh, the listers, the listers department is, the language on this is a little bit, there is some items in this budget that I have entered into this budget, such as Nemrick services and IT services. So when I say the lister's office is proposing a $16,199 increase, just for the record, I'll tell you the exact number of, of those expenses. Uh, 6,000 of that is actually coming from the Nemrick services and IT services that I removed from the admin budget, that I'm spreading across all of the budgets within the general fund. And, and basically what this, what this budget would do is operate the lister's office in FY22. Personnel expenses for this department have increased by $1,615 due to the lister's office reorganizing. Lister one is proposing to work 11 and a half hours per week, lister two is proposing to work four hours per week, and lister three is proposing to work 29 and a half hours per week. Office expenses have also increased for this department.
Can I interrupt you just for a minute, Brandon?
Yes.
So the sheet that we have is not quite right, so can everybody write that down quickly, right? The latest sheet that I have says the breakdown, 10, 4, and 32, right? So, that's not, huh?
Yes, in the right-hand column, those, those numbers have changed, the listers and I met about an hour and a half before this meeting, and, and they proposed a difference in hours.
So run that by me again, then, what's?
So, lister one is proposed to work 11 and a half hours per week, lister two is proposing to work four hours per week, and lister three is proposing to work 29 and a half hours per week.
Okay, sorry, I just.
Oh, it's okay.
Didn't add up to this one. Can we?
Yep.
Can you?
But everything else within that budget is updated.
It's what?
Everything else is, is updated, I just forgot to change that right-hand column with those hours, because it really didn't reflect the budget itself, so I didn't change those numbers. But everything else is, the, the numbers are correct in the budget. So office, office expenses have also increased for this department. Similar to the town clerk's office, Nemrick and IT services were distributed across the departments that use these services, as noted above, the fullest expense of these services was historically expensed to the admin budget. Other expenses contributing to the increase in expenses within this department include 6,000 for town parcel mapping. According to the lister's office, 3,000 was budgeted for this in fiscal year 21, but it was removed from the budget, which caused this number to double this year. Basically, that, that's an annual expense that needs to be paid in order for us to have that service, so this year would be a double-up payment, and then next year it would, it would go back down to 3,000, so it would, it would just be an increase in this year's budget. Workers' compensation nor unemployment was budgeted for the lister's office since fiscal year 2018. So we, moving forward, we, we do need to, to budget for those two items. So, as with the town clerk's office, I've also compiled the compensation report for the listers, and the data is attached as, as attachment B. So the VLCT compensation and benefits report provided compensation data from lister's office from 144 cities and towns in the state of Vermont. I, I gave this compensation report in the previous meeting, but according to the lister's office, the previous study unfairly compared Weathersfield to cities and towns that are either much larger or smaller than Weathersfield. So the lister's office requested that our administration compares data from cities and towns with a similar population. During those discussions, I agreed that that would be fair, so we did narrow that data down. Further, so lister's office and our administration agreed to compare Weathersfield to the towns of Dummerston, West Rutland, Thetford, East Montpelier, Fairhaven, Putney, Ferrisburg, and Royalton. Additionally, the data was narrowed down by listers in Vermont that are employed part-time and does not include listers that are paid stipends. So when you look at that narrowed data, those are two variables that were removed. The average hourly rate, according to the towns analyzed, is $18.77 per hour. So this, this data basically shows hours per year, parcels in the respective towns, the population of those respective towns, hours worked per week, the respective hourly rates, and in the annual rates. Does anybody have any questions regarding the hours that are proposed, the revenues from the listers, personnel expenses, office expenses, or the compensation report?
Where did you, where did you say that the, or maybe I heard you wrong or whatever, said, said the amount of business that's done, or, or permits or anything, did you go into that or no?
No.
Okay. It's a compare, it's comparable.
Oh, yes.
So the workload per se, kind of, you know what I mean? Okay, go ahead, and versus population?
Yeah, so there are parcels, the number of parcels per town, that was of, was one of the, the pieces of data that we looked at, and that piece of data is reflected here. It was not reflected in the previous report that I sent to you in your packet, or via email, this report changed just, just within the past 48 hours, when we decided to, to narrow the data down to these towns. One of the comparisons that was requested was, was to do just that, and to look at the parcel numbers, and to look at the population, and, and add those two data sets into this chart, so those, those now exist.
I'm sorry, what was that for, the reason? You said that you had a request to do that?
Yes, it was required, requested to show those two, to show those populations, and to show the parcel numbers within those, within those towns.
Did I see a couple of hands or no?
Yeah.
It, it don't matter.
You can go first, Paul.
I just, I wanted, I wanted to clarify, too, that the, the monies that we're looking for, the lister's salaries, is the FY2020 proposed department stuff, right? So there's 9,230, 3,640.
Wait, where are you?
I think you have the old budget document. I think you have the old budget document. Those numbers have been updated, so the paper copy would be the most recent. Either that or the one that-
Oh, okay. This is what's in the packet, so that's not updated, then?
It was updated in the past 48 hours. So the budgets have been changing, um, since, since the packet. So these, these paper copies that you have are the most updated copies.
Okay, well, my fault. But I still wanted to ask, uh, so those are them, so now we're at 10,615, 3,640, and 26,800.
Are those accurate, Brandon, for us? I don't think so. So, is it, the, the, did you just follow the numbers, what Paul just said?
Yeah, so, so $10,615 is the correct number. It's, it's on the paper copy, um, and, and that reflects at 11 and a half hours.
But the paper copy says 10 hours, and you said that's gonna be-
Yeah, but that has no effect on, on the calculations in the budget.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. Earlier, I stated that the 10 hours, the 4 hours, the 32 hours, that's in the notes section. Um, I didn't update that section.
2,640 is right. And, and then this one dropped, so it gets 26.
So basically, what we did is we reconfigured the hours, um, to remove the increased cost of benefits that was proposed in the previous budget.
I mean, overall, overall, it looks like there's 45 hours total of people, hours a week.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
About 46.
Forty-six?
That's what it says on here.
So, let's do the math.
Oh, but I think an hour. Yes.
This is Lynn. Um, it's been 45 hours for the lister's office for, um, if I can remember what Carolyn said correctly, for the last 12 years.
Yeah, I know, but from the 10 hours that was previously proposed, in addition to the 4 and 32, that put you guys at 46, which was an additional hour, but now-
Sorry, it was my mistake, then.
Yeah, right now, it's 45, it's 45 hours there. So, so that's-
It should have been 45 hours.
Yeah, and that, I think that's what it comes out to be. Okay. I want to do, I want to redo this math, because one of the things I'm, I wanted to look at too, is we have Lister one, Lister two, Lister three. We're gonna have different hourly rates for each one.
Correct.
And what I want to see is, is the experience, the years, and so on, just like we did with Floanne. I want, uh, uh, without the names, obviously, but I, I guess, I mean, that, that's gonna, that's gonna matter too, is how much each one is based on experience and so on, and, and also the duties. So, I mean, obviously, the, the, because I'm also concerned about the 4 hours, uh, for one lister, obviously, doesn't have anywhere near the same duties as, as the 29 and a half hour lister.
True.
Well, they do by statute. There's no differentiating between one, one you vote on.
I understand that, and that's, that's an issue too. So what I'm getting at is, they, they, we just were told here with the Town Clerk that the Town Manager can, can change salaries and do all that, no matter what's voted on. Correct? Is that what I just heard?
Yes.
Okay. So that means we can do the same with the listers, then, correct? Because they're still the same. They're elected officials. The treasurer is elected official. So what I'm saying is, I'd like to really see job descriptions for these things, and to under, not just listers, but for Town Clerk, uh, you know, if, if you're gonna have multiple, how do you judge the two? If, if it's what Dave says, and they're all exactly the same, then they should all get exactly the same pay, then.
Well, but what complicates this a little bit is, there's only one Town Clerk, and there's only one Treasurer. So there's no competition for that same job title, even in the elected world, other than the, other than the, uh-
Then it's really not Lister one, two, and three, then. It's head lister, uh, assistant lister.
No, it's lister, lister, lister.
Oh, well, then, there is no competition. They're all the same.
Other than seniority.
Then they're all the same.
Well, let's, everybody hold on here.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm speaking strictly as a voter. There's no differentiating in Weathersfield that I'm aware of, that when you, when you vote at the ballot box, when you vote on Town Clerk, you're voting on one person. When you're voting on Treasurer, you're voting on one person. When you're voting on listers, we do have three of them rotating in different terms, but there's no differentiating between the lister, per se-
Dave?
At the ballot box. Yes, yes.
Dave? This is Carolyn, hi.
Yeah.
We can put something together for you for the next meeting.
Okay. Okay. Joey? Hold on. Hold on, Joey, go ahead. Joey's got his hand up.
I had a question about where you ended up with a quote from Nemrick for assessing services.
Uh, $20,000 annually.
How much?
$20,000 annually.
Do basically the same work.
Lynn, Lynn, go ahead. Did you have a question, Lynn?
No, I have an answer.
Okay.
We do have a, we do have a head lister, and he is, um, voted in by all the listers at our annual meeting, and that is Carolyn, and she has the most experience, and she was the one that we asked for the most money for. And we don't care if you know who Lister one, two, and three are, because it's not a secret. Carolyn is Lister one, Alexis is Lister two, and Lynn is Lister three.
So, what, when was that meeting? Does the public aware of that or no?
For every lister in the state of Vermont and assessor, and it's put it out by the Department of Taxes.
No, 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 I'm talking about the meeting that you just said you had to, must have been an annual meeting, of the three listers of Weathersfield. Is that what I heard?
Correct.
When was that?
I don't think she can hear you.
We have it after the election every year.
Okay.
Sort of like we do.
Yeah. So, so there's a meeting of something, and you kind of establish, or whatever, you vote on what you kind of want to do, but I think what Paul asked was a different question, that somehow the Town Manager's involved with, with reviewing, if you will, uh, that criteria to set pay rates. Is that what you were getting to? I mean, that's what I heard.
Yeah, because the, to, to, to what Lynn was saying, it, it, it sounds like what we do here with the Chair, Vice Chair, so on, but we don't change any of the, you know, the, the values there. This is a monetary thing, so that, you know, that's an important thing of, of, of how that gets, you know, it sounds like they're doing the right thing, you know, the person with the most experience, and so on and so forth.
So what are the hour, what are the hours before this change? That's a question for me. I'm a voter. I don't know who I'm voting for, whether I'm voting for the person that is working 4 hours a week, 10 hours a week, or 29 hours a week. And I, I think-
I'm sorry. When you vote this spring, I, I'm putting my name in, you're voting for Lynn, as she is a lister. When we meet, we all decide together how to split up the hours.
So-
And there's some things, there's some things that I have a strength at, and there's some things that Carolyn has a strength at. And together, we talk, and we all agree on how the hours are split up, and the majority of the time, we work together on all the projects.
What happened to the third lister? How, how can it be like together, but you just only mentioned two, and then there's a third one? And so my question's gonna become, if, if we're paying this kind of money, and somebody wanted to, to be involved, it, it sounds to me like that, that this has become political within the listers, meaning-
No, not at all.
Well, let me finish. I'll tell you how. Well, let me finish, and I'll tell you how. So if I decided to run as lister or anybody else, and then you say we're gonna have an annual meeting of the three listers, and two, uh, decide that they have the hours, but, but really, I'm not quote qualified, or I'm gonna be the low person, so I'm gonna work 4 hours, I gotta tell you, the way that would be, would be the next year, when a term comes up, if I wanted an increase in hours, I would have another person run that would be on board with me, and then we'd have our annual lister meeting, and then the whole thing could change. I-
It's never been like that, Dave, and I don't foresee that happening. Alexis has had some surgeries, and her father has health conditions, and she's very scared to come into the office. If we call her and we talk to her as, um, as a group, and we need her to do a job with us, she comes and does it. She is not being shut out of anything to do with the list of offices.
No, I, I didn't accuse anybody of shutting out at all. I just was, I just am confused about the hours. So she's working 4 hours a week now?
That's what she's scheduled for.
Well, that was, maybe I should ask Brandon. Is, is she working 4 hours now?
Um, she's, so we looked at, um, and, and this was one of the things that I, I disagreed on. We, when we built these budgets, we built them from a zero-based budgeting approach, um, which means we, we don't just take the average, and we weren't able to do it for all the lines this year. I'll be the first to admit that. We've, we did it to the majority of those lines. We'd need significant more time to do it to the whole budget, which we plan to do next year. Uh, but this is one of the lines that we reviewed, because it was one of the lines that changed. So, when we looked at the historical trend data regarding Alexis and, and Lister two, um, we found that she worked 8 hours this year. However, the listers did answer this question, um, very, very well, and they said that, you know, the list, Lister two had issues this year. However, I also looked at the year before that, and the year before, for that, and on average, it was 39 hours, um, per year that Lister two has worked. Um, so my question was, will this, will Lister two begin to work those 4 hours? Because that's 208 hours annually, which is 160 hours more than it was in the past. And I believe, Lynn, what was your response to that?
We still would like to keep those hours budgeted. If for any reason Alexis, or Carolyn, or I were to resign or not be elected, and there was a new meeting, and the three people in the lister's office said, "We each want to split the hours equally," then that's what would happen. We don't want to-
And then the-
We historically have a set amount of hours, and we want to keep those hours, because that's what it takes to get our work done.
So, so basically, if, if Lister two doesn't work those hours, then what would happen is, is the, the surplus from that line would flow into the general fund surplus?
I was just gonna ask that.
It'd be about $2,000.
Weird. So if the, so if the, so if the hours don't get used, then the budget is, and you just gave us a brief history where it's, it's not, because this isn't just last year, this is a few years now, and it sounds like it's 200 hours of unused labor.
Correct.
Budget.
Not, not entirely, because sometimes, especially in the spring, when we're doing, um, our inspections, we have to go over our set amount of hours to reach the statutory deadline of April 1st, and sometimes we utilize those extra hours to stay within our budget and get the work done.
John?
A minute ago, Joey asked about, let me back up. Last meeting, we asked Brandon to, to approach Nemrick for listing services, and he did. And without knowing all the specifics, they came in with a number to provide those services to the town of Weathersfield that's considerably under what we're budgeting. We got a philosophical question on how we want to approach that. Are we happy that, that the workload justifies spending this amount of money? Or can it be done outside for considerably less money? And, and numerous towns, um, from the list that, and, and in conversation with Nemrick, they, they, it isn't like they only do it in one town. What would you guess, Brandon? At least a half dozen towns of our size that they rattled off.
They, they provide, they provide these services for quite a number of towns. So yes, I mean, you're, you're absolutely right, John. It's, it's, it's a question of philosophy.
Joey first.
Excuse me. Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I gave, I gave Brandon a list of approximately seven items that are statutory for the listers and assessors to do. How much of that list would the assessors actually complete for you for that $20,000? And these are statutory items that must be completed every single year.
First, Joey. He's had his hand up for a little bit.
Yeah, well, well, first to respond to that, even if it costs $30,000, we're looking at half of what we're asking for here. Light tax need, 57,120, is that what we're talking about? So we're talking about half, almost. I'm, I'm new to this whole deal. You guys have been here a lot longer than me, and I'm just gonna outright, right, say that, that this has been a headache right along, and regardless of what goes on and who works what hours here, there's a chance to save the town, the taxpayers, almost $30,000. On the, on the good side of things. We just spent 15, 20 minutes talking about $30,000 on the highway end of things.
Mike?
Um, Lynn just pointed out that there's seven statutory items. The listers-
No, 70.
Excuse me, I have the floor. Oh, thank you. Uh, 70 statutory items. You gave us a list of eight other towns that you wanted us to compare to. We're looking at the number of parcels, the number of hours per week, the annual rates, the hours per year, and almost everything in the Weathersfield column is doubled. Now, if all of these items are statutory, all these other towns are required to do the same thing. Why is it taking us twice as much time to do this job?
Because most of those towns, we have double the amount of parcels.
No, that, that's not what the paper says here. Ferris, Ferrisburg has 1,547 and does this job for $9,000.
We're clearly not looking at the same paper.
Well, this is what you requested, according to the Town Manager.
So, I mean, the population, the parcels in Weathersfield, according to the data, this is the same data, I believe, Carolyn. What, what data do you have?
Actually, I don't have any, so I, I just spoke. It's not that we're not looking at the same paper, it's that I don't have the paper in front of me.
Okay. It's okay.
Anybody, yeah, Paul, go ahead.
Just quickly, I just, I also wanted to say too, that, um, I mean, we've historically had, um, good results with, um, the listers that we have, the, the, the numbers that we've gotten, just, um, you know, like you had mentioned, the, uh, the tax rates and everything, and is, has been, you know, even. Am I correct with, by saying that? I mean, we haven't had to be forced to have an appraisal or anything of that nature.
Well, that's what I was wondering out loud, having, having said that. Well, I don't, I don't want to cut you off. Go ahead.
No, 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 that, that, that's fine. I just, I wanted to say-
Paul, can we take a pause, please? Because it looks like the battery's low, and I really don't want to talk unless we're including, take a break? If, if anybody's online, we've taken a break for a minute to, to either change batteries or something. We're gonna fix this. It says the battery's running low, so we're not cutting you out of any, any discussion at all, and we're just taking a break. Is that what you're gonna do, Brandon? Change battery?
Oh, no, we're, we're actually, we're already fixed, and-
Oh, there's just a screen up that says that?
Yep, she's about to give it life.
Okay.
All set.
Is, is everybody back? We had a moment there where no, no one did any talking. I paused the meeting. I didn't want to, I didn't want to go on with the meeting. Uh, we had a little battery problem, but we're all back. Can everybody hear me?
We're not all back.
Uh, uh, we gotta wait for John. He asked to go outside for a minute. Is everybody still on? Can anybody hear me, Suzanne?
Yes, 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 I hear you.
Nice. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. I'm just gonna wait for John to come back. He, I thought, he thought probably we were gonna break for a minute or two longer. We had a little battery issue here with something, some technology. Hey, John, you're back. We're back. The battery's changed, or whatever's going on. We're back. It's fast. We're, we're fixing. Any, any other comments? I don't know where we left off. I don't know where we left off. We did have a, we did have a comparison here from, I don't know what it is, five or six towns that were found about the same population, parcels, workload, so on. In the same-
The day?
Yep, okay, Carolyn, go ahead.
Hi, sorry.
Yep.
When we put that together, I was mostly, we were mostly concerned with population and getting the town, comparing similar populations to Weathersfield.
Okay.
Honestly, I wasn't paying any much attention to the personal count or the totals, and I, that sounds, doesn't sound right to me.
Okay.
I'd like to contact some of these other towns and see if maybe the information, either the information they entered or submitted to BLCT was incorrect, or if there's something missing. Just, it just doesn't seem right to me.
Okay.
And if there's something off.
No, that's fair. The way things are going right now, the discussion, you know, I didn't anticipate a motion to approve tonight. I'm listening to different things, and if there's something you'd like to check up for next week's meeting, we're going to have another meeting on Monday night. That's fine.
Tuesday.
Excuse me, Tuesday. Next Tuesday. Monday's a holiday.
Okay.
Joey.
Can I say one more thing, please?
Okay, go ahead.
One of the reasons for the hours that we have set is because Larry and all the town managers in the past have wanted to keep the listers open, the lister's office open and accessible as many hours as possible that the town office was open, so people could access the information about their lister's card, have someone to talk to during regular business hours, because the information contained in our office is not contained anywhere else in the building. And unless you know how, unless you've been trained on how to read that information and explain it to someone, you don't understand it very easily. And that was part of the reasons why those hours were set at that amount of hours, so there would be a presence there in the office.
Okay. Joey, Joey, go ahead.
I just want to strongly really say that we need to look seriously at Nimerick. We're going to save a lot of money, and no offense, really, and I'm not trying to be a bad guy here, but I've lived in town my whole life. I have not needed to go in to speak with the listers one time. And I've built a house, I've gone through, they have visited my property and done an appraisal, which I thought was fair, and they did a good job with that. But if we have a chance to save some money, it's, that's what we need to do.
Well, let me, let me, let me make this comment. I certainly want to listen to what Carolyn said, which she said that she wanted to contact these towns or whatever, or do what you got to do to figure out if this is all what's included in their reporting. That's a fair question.
Definitely.
So, and Nimerick too, whether or not, I don't know the scope, or whether they say that they need the listers and Nimerick, and that could be, I don't know, where, where, I don't know, I don't know their, from 0 to 100, or do they go from 0 to 70 and they leave you 30 short, meaning percentage?
Right, but we need to not rule them out. We need to know-
No, I'm just saying, I don't know their scope, and perhaps that's just an email or something saying, "What do you do for this?" or whatever. I did see the email, very briefly, one of them, from Nimerick, and it said, and this is, this is 100% true, but the same is true with the land use office, which we're going to take up in a few minutes. It comes and goes, and you heard Lynn say that a minute ago, where they do have a deadline to meet, April or something like that. So the workload increases and then it decreases, so it comes and goes. Same is true with land use. Did you have a question, Paul?
No, I was just saying that we, our CLA numbers and stuff, everything has been really good, as you know, as we've talked about, so, and just, I, I'd really like to see if, to the lister's point, is Nimerick going to give the same kind of service and make sure that everything that we need is done? And also just, as a, we have three people here that their salaries, their livelihood and stuff, I just, I mean, I want to, I just want to have it all and all the data in front of us, that's all.
For the next meeting, I need clarification on this, though. I mean, it sounds like one of the listers has a pattern of not, of not being able to, or is not, you know, I don't want to be critical of working maybe four or eight, or I don't know what it is, hours a year, not four hours a week. That's a little, that's a little concerning, because if the other two are actually taking the hours, if the hours are being all used, that's question number one, and then that's a little, then the hours not being correctly reported to what we're getting on our paperwork. Number two, you can find out whatever the scope is of Nimerick, but I'm just wondering out loud here, because, yes, we're spending more money, and we've been able to hold off a reappraisal in our CLA, so all the work is doing whatever they're doing, but, but, but why I'm wondering about that now is, it was only two or three months ago that we were being scolded for not having a reappraisal. So you can't like have it both ways, where I'm doing such a really good job and it's costing a little more money, and we've got the information and we're funneling it in, and under the system that the state of Vermont uses, we're holding the CLA at 92 or 94, or whatever the last one was, and you don't need to reach 85 to get a reappraisal, and then we have significant avocation for a reappraisal. That's confusing to me. So if you, if you can get that, if you-
It's Carolyn.
Yep, okay.
Our plea for a reappraisal was because of the timing. It's not because we don't feel we're doing a good job. It's the timing. We're pretty sure that in a couple of years, we're going to need one, and we just wanted to get things started now. That's all there was to it.
Okay. We're not going to make a decision tonight, because there's too, there seems to be too many loose ends. So we are going to have a meeting next Tuesday. We are considering keeping the town meeting, and therefore, we'd have to have all of these budgets wrapped up by around the 25th of January, so, or, I don't have a calendar in front of me, it's likely, it may be likely that we'll have another meeting beyond next Tuesday for the following Monday, I'm not really sure, to wind up the total warning, but we, but we got Highway out of the way, we got Town Clerk. I'm thinking we're going to get maybe one or two more knocked off here tonight, so things are moving. Can I just wind this up? I want to move on to the next one. Did you have another?
I just wanted to ask Brandon to do research on the towns that are using Nimerick.
Okay.
And find out what actually is taking place there. There might be some question as to, okay, it was $20,000, but if we have to do this, it's another this, and if we have to do that, it's another this. So there might be some range there that fluctuates a little bit. Where are they, how are they doing with their CLAs?
Okay.
CLDs?
I would definitely say that based on these annual rates in this data set, that there's some other supplemental to, this data set is strictly limited to part-time listers in Vermont. So if there's, if there's Nimerick Services here, or if there's an assessor here, it's not showing that. So I could quickly review assessor data, data in Vermont, and see if there's overlap in these respective towns.
Get as much as you can, so we-
That would call us right there if there's an assessor there.
As best we can.
Yep, exactly. Is everybody understanding that? Lynn and Carolyn, we're not, we've not made any decisions yet. It's going to be, it's going to be continued to next week. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Let's move to land use, please.
Yep. So the land use office is proposing a $4,967 increase in tax revenue and anticipates a $156 increase in zoning permit income, as demonstrated on pages 13 to 14 of this budget narrative. Personnel expenses for this department increased by 6923. To move the land use administrator from 25 hours per week to 30 hours per week, this increase in hours was voted unanimous in favor by the Weathersfield Planning Commission. Due to the land use administrator's previous role in the, in the US military, no benefits need to be budgeted for this increase in hours. Similar to the town clerk, the $4,967 increase in tax revenue is primarily coming from the breakout in IT service, well, not primarily, but $1,448 of it is coming from me breaking out IT services across the departments that use it, and there's one user in that office, so that, that cost is $1,448. Other variances include a $100 increase in office expenses and a $100 increase in commission induced. Are there any questions on this budget?
Is there enough money in land use maps with us redoing the map this year?
What kind of land use maps do you anticipate?
We're changing the zoning map.
Okay.
We've already, we've already adopted, and we set a hearing last night for the change between the land, the future land use map becoming the current land use map.
And how many maps would need to be printed, and does anybody know the cost of each of those maps, and how many would need? I believe they're around, are we talking about just a piece of paper, laminated, or?
I guess it, we haven't been printing zoning booklets, per se. It's online, and if somebody comes in, they want it, we just print it for them when they want it.
True.
So, I'm just asking, maybe we're okay.
Yeah, we can totally print, you know, 11 by 17 maps upstairs, but if you're talking about a large piece of paper-
Well, there would, because in the office, there is, there's the big zoning map, and that would have to be changed. I don't know what that costs. I just, I just wanted to throw that out there. It might, it might not be a big deal.
Yeah, I think, you know, if you're just looking for white printed maps, I think it would be, the reason the previous ones were expenses, expensive, is because it was that overlay map, and those ran about $25, and, you know, we got four of them, so that, actually, more than that.
Yeah, there's more than that.
Here we go. We got 67 of them.
Yep. But I think it's sufficient, I think it's sufficient, Mike, you know, and if it goes over, we'll just review it at that time, and I'm sure there's something we can do.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Joey.
I was wondering about, is it a good idea to take out the $2,000 for legal expenses? I understand his expertise, but it almost feels like something to make the number, the bottom line, look better, and it might leave us in a pinch, or with the opportunity to go way over.
It's going over. Okay, it's going over this year.
So.
We've had significant legal issues, and so it's going over.
Paul, one of the complaints on our land use department is the fact we don't enforce things. When you enforce things, you-
Costs money.
It costs money.
As I understand Brandon explaining it to me, is that that 2,000 is kind of a modest amount that they're taking out because of their expertise with the law, that we, that we reduce our contact with-
Good point.
With the town's attorney in kind of more simplistic questions that may come from either our board, or an applicant, or something. It's not really touching what's set for, like, full-blown legal expenses with challenges and appeals and that kind of stuff.
Chris has a law degree.
Right, and in the grand, this is part of the general fund, too, and in the grand scheme of things, if it goes over by $2,000, it's not the end of the world.
Well, there's, there's a legal fee in some of the other, in the administration.
Right.
So it's, I think that works out okay.
Yeah, you worry about that next June, when it looks like the whole budget's going over.
I'm interested in hearing a motion to accept the land use budget as presented.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Most of the main seconded to approve the land use budget in FY 2021, '22, as presented tonight on January 12th. If we have the right data, right, Brandon? We have the right data here in front of us?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep. Let's move to police.
Police's.
I spoke with Bill very briefly before the meeting, and haven't talked to him for a long time, and I told him probably that it was going to be at the end, and that he did not, did not need to be here. I don't know if he is. I didn't know, all I mentioned to him was this, I wanted to know where the car was that we bought, and he told me that the delivery is still a little bit out there, meaning maybe a month. They've used up some other contracts to other police departments that lost some cruisers somehow throughout the country. The only discussion I had with him is going to be the same, and, and he was happy to listen to it. Brandon and I have talked about this. We have, it's not on the agenda, so we don't have to talk about it tonight, but there is a surplus in the general fund as well, and since we are in the general fund with police, that I, this is simply my idea, and I'm looking for, I'm looking for board support along with Brandon, he's right behind me, or in front of me, to allocate a certain amount of money for police reserve for another car. So I ran that by Bill, and he said that because the account on the cruiser that we're now buying will be drained down to almost zero, that, obviously, that's forward thinking about trying to deal with these surpluses in a creative way, so that we don't have to charge taxes in the next, this year or next year. So that's all I ran by him, and I didn't get into any of the budget numbers. And do you have any, do you have anything to add, Brandon? I know you went over, you had to go over this with Bill, so.
Yeah, we, we definitely reviewed all of the expenses and all the revenues in the police department. As you can see, the police department's requesting a decrease in tax revenue for FY '22. Police funds are increasing slightly. Corps of Engineers revenue is decreasing slightly. Expenses are relatively stable in this department. The total variance is, variance in expenses is $17,756 less in expenses, and I definitely agree that we, we will need a new police cruiser in the next couple of years, so it would be forward thinking. We have about $170,000 in general fund reserves, so I would even say that instead of even touching the reserves for this cruiser, why not use the general fund surplus just to purchase the cruiser? We haven't paid for it yet, so we could leave the $20,000 where it is, we wouldn't really have to create more work and move money around, we could just use the surplus to fund the new police car.
We did make that motion, though, before, so-
Okay.
It may be, it may be a technicality, but we did, we did do that, I think before Paul and Joey came on, so I just like to, I threw that out there, it's not a, it's not a discussion that I want to have tonight with surpluses in the general fund. I do like this, my comment is, you know, over time, I know, John, you and I have talked about this, when we first decided to add a second cruiser with a second person, and we weren't necessarily on board with having all the part-time people as well, and this is a decrease, if you look at it, about halfway down, a third of the way down on page one. So I'm not sure where that got heard, but that got heard, and it is lowering the part-timers a little bit. And one of the reasons why is that when we decided to have two cars and two full-time people, that took a lot of burden away from the state police, and our calls shifted dramatically, and, you know, we didn't mean that to happen, and so we want coverage from everybody, and we don't want to be the single entity with all kinds of money spent here, so. John?
The reward for that is there's charges for dispatching, and that really sticks in my craw significantly. Some towns have no police force, so we're not only are we paying for our own police- Some towns have no police force, so we're not only are we paying for our own policing to the tune of $304,000, we're subsidizing other towns' policing because the state police cover them 100%. So what's our reward? They charge us for dispatching.
That's totally right.
It's like a tick, it's like, it's like getting...
It's like, what the heck? Let's get rid of our police department, then we don't have to pay for dispatching either.
It's like, it's like having donuts with your coffee.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't wanna...
Are you allowed to make that joke when you talk about police?
No. No.
Notice how quiet I've been.
Yep. I'm, I'm really, you know, as we go through these budgets, I'm really appreciative of the fact that whoever's put these together has thought about the people who are paying. And we're allowing for some pay increases here, and they're asking for the same money or less than they did a year ago. I'm not sure how all that fits together, and God bless Brandon, he's gonna be in the hot seat if it doesn't, but, but...
I'm pretty confident that we...
I know, I'm just saying that, that...
Actually, I'm 100% confident.
He's taking out credit cards.
Is there any other comments about the police budget for FY 22? If I'm not hearing any, then I'm, I'm looking for a motion to pass it.
I'd like to see a line added for $16,000 to go into reserve.
That's what I was gonna bring up.
Oh, I wanna take up, I wanna take up, I don't think we're gonna need that. And I think that the, the general fund surplus is such that we can go for more than that, John. I'm thinking more like 25, because...
Slide it in there.
Yes. Because according to the FY audit, I'm talking about after the annual budget. We don't need to send any more money, because doing what you do, then it would make the taxes go up.
You're right.
And we don't need to do that. We don't need to ask for any more taxes this year.
I was gonna ask a question that had to do with that reserve, so...
Well, but tonight...
That answers the question.
But tonight's preparation, I'm not, I mean, it's 20 of 9, we don't have that surplus information for the general fund in front of us. I'd like to see it in front of us in a fashion that we can make an educated move...
Yep.
And not guess.
Yep.
For tonight, I'd like to hear a motion to adopt the police budget for FY 22 for our town.
I'll make that motion to approve the proposed FY 22 budget for 318045. That's the right number, yeah.
Is that right? Is that the right number?
Which number are you looking for? Are you looking for the total expenditures? It would be $320,941, of which $304,942 is taxes.
Thank you, I, again, I was looking at the packet on there, not on the, you know...
Did you get that, John?
Yep.
Okay.
So I'll amend it for that, sorry.
Is there a second? Okay. The motion was made is seconded to approve the police budget for the town for FY 22 of $320,942, of which $304,942 is taxes. Any other discussion?
Just a quick comment that, Brandon, somewhere, when we decide to buy the new cruiser, we put together a package to pay for it, and that, so that money's encumbered somewhere, and I'm not sure where.
Out of the reserve accounts, and then we did, so...
Right, right. Don't forget it.
No, so let's, can you, can somebody, either Olivia or whatever, research the motion that was made, and I don't even know the month it was made now. So we did have that number, we had the bid, and then we had the equipment, because the car needs to be fitted.
I think it was about a year ago, because it was during the budget discussion.
And then we had enough money there to pay for it, and I know we made a motion to do it.
But it came from a couple of different places.
Yes.
But that money's encumbered.
That's correct.
Yes. So if you can do that for the next meeting, then, then we'll have it in front of us.
Okay, no problem.
Any other discussion about the FY 22 police budget? Not cars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks. The only thing we have is, is there any other business that anybody can think of? I don't have anything. Yes, Joey?
Are we gonna take up, like, are the fire contracts signed? Does that a done deal? Or, not to go there, but I'm just curious where we stand with that.
They're, they're signed by us. At the next meeting, we'll have discussion about fire funding as part of the general fund. What's, what's left, actually? Now, we've really knocked off some good things.
So in the next meeting, I was planning on, on giving the board a proposed, or, an update on the fire department contracts, and in the following meeting is when I was going to be prepared.
Too far out, isn't it?
We're gonna be, we're gonna try to, well, we're gonna talk about funding on Tuesday, week from tonight. So I guess the contract could go on after that, but the funding is gonna be decided next Tuesday night. We're gonna try to, we're gonna try to wrap up anything to do with budgets by next Tuesday night now, because we have so little left to do. I mean, we just passed Highway, that's a big one. The solid waste, hopefully, is gonna, is gonna be passing itself. The only thing left to do is administration, which would be, Brandon's office...
So does now.
He didn't, he didn't hear you. But the contract, to answer your question, the contract, per se, I guess, can go on longer than the budget process, but the budget's gonna be wound up.
And that's what I was referring to, when I said we can't, Brandon, because I think we have to have this all done by like the 25th, don't we, of this month, in order to...
Yes, there's a warning, yes, there's a warning period.
Unless we shove everything out.
Unless we go to May.
Which we have.
But, but I still wanna, I still wanna stay focused.
I agree.
Brandon has put in so much time on this budget, it's foolish to let it drag out into, into March and April.
I agree.
So we have the admin budget, the library budget, and the library budget is being presented to the Board of Trustees on the 21st of this month, which is Thursday, which is two days after the Select Board meeting. So we won't be able to review and approve that budget on...
On what?
On the 19th, which is our next Select Board meeting.
Well, we'll have to inform them that we wanna wrap up the budget process by the 19th. Is there any way that they can meet prior to that?
Okay, I'll ask them.
We need to inform them that we have to be done by the 25th, so they're gonna have to do it before the 21st. They're gonna be ready for that other meeting.
Don't have a whole lot to say about their budget, but nonetheless, it's still gonna be plugged in.
Yes.
So we have admin, library, fire services, solid waste.
Listers.
Listers. Everything else...
Got, voted on tonight. And potentially, the surplus of the general fund.
Yeah, oh yeah, the surplus for the general fund, we're prepared to present the rest of the budgets on Tuesday.
Can I have a motion for warrants, please?
There is no warrants this week.
There's no warrants tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay. Nothing. Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?